I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the city council for November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two to order. Madam City Clerk, could we have the real call, please?
Yes, Mayor Proton. Councilmember Chavez?
Here.
Councilmember Viscara?
Here.
Councilmember Yu?
I see his name.
May we come back to Councilmember Yu?
Councilmember Yu, can you hear us?
We know that the council member's here, but why don't we just continue to move forward, and we'll take note of when he comes on screen at the meeting.
Okay, sounds good.
And Mayor Sternquist is absent.
May I motion to excuse Mayor Sternquist?
Sir.
All right. If there's no objections, then Mayor Sternquist is excused. Next, we have the invocation, and we have the pleasure of having Pastor Darryl Kelty from the Community of Christ Church located at fifty-eight, fifty-one Temple City Boulevard. Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance afterwards.
Oh divine Creator, we thank you for this world that you have created. We thank you for this beautiful day that provides maybe a little bit of warmth and light to shine upon us this day. We thank you that we're able to live in this community and in order to enjoy that benefits from what that community has to offer us. It is for this reason we come to you in your presence this evening, to ask your blessings upon us, that we may do your will this evening, to build this a better community for tomorrow. May this city council and staff have your wisdom to be with them, that they may do those things that would indeed make this even better community. We know not what the future may bring, but would ask dear Creator, that in all we do, all we say, all we hear, all we think, might be for the betterment of the community and the world at large, not just for our generations, but for generations to come, who will inherit what we leave. That we might indeed look to the future with hope, anticipation, and eagerness, with a positive outlook on life. That those future generations may look back and say to each other, "They did a good job. Thank you very much." We thank you with an amen. Amen.
Thank you so much, Pastor. All right. Please follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have ceremonial matters. We have a update from our youth committee, and tonight we have the pleasure of having youth committee member Hannah Quoc, who will be providing us an update. So welcome, Hannah.
Hello. Thank you. Hi, my name is Hannah Quoc, and on behalf of the youth committee, I would like to report on our activities and digital billboard slides. Since the summer, workshops to prepare the members on the objectives of the community include attending Temple City's Neighborhood Watch, the grand opening of City of Baldwin Park's Serenity Homes, which is tiny homes for families experiencing homelessness in Baldwin Park, to starting a series of workshops relating to public safety and emergency preparedness. The youth committee completed its first safety and emergency preparedness workshops in October. In that first workshop, the members learned about situational awareness and how to prepare to act before an emergency or possible threat. Sheriffs of Temple City presented a series of slides explaining about the importance of locating all exits, being cautious of one's surroundings, and when and when not to take action during a situation. Hence the phrasing, "Add to the solution, not the problem." Currently, from last Thursday's youth committee meeting, members took part in a basic fire identification and preventing workshop demonstrated by public safety supervisor, Mr. Brian Arizumi. After each training workshop, committee members will create messages relating to safety and emergency preparedness. The first slides, the first set of slides regarding public safety is now on display on the digital billboard of Rosemead Boulevard. The next set of slides will be displayed in December. The youth committee will have a chance to speak with Congresswoman Judy Chu's office to provide input for their planning of a congressional youth advisory council. Up there is the slides that will be displayed on Rosemead Boulevard. Upcoming youth committee events include Lights on TC, where the committee members will again promote safety and emergency preparedness through a Santa workshop booth. There, youth committee members will go over safety preparation procedures in order to educate and inform the public about what they have learned through their training. Youth committee members will also attend a tour of the Homestead Museum to learn about the history of Temple City and the family of Temple on December eleventh. Anyone interested in learning more about the youth committee can contact the city clerk's office. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Hannah. Does anyone from council have any questions for Hannah or comments?
We should grill her, since she's the only one here. Keep it easy on her. A good job. I just want to add, I just want to thank, of course, our sheriff team and, of course, Brian Arizumi for all they've done to help the youth committee with their projects so far. It's much appreciated, their time and efforts. And also, of course, Peggy and Jillian, who oversee all of this. You know, these billboards that you saw were actually created by the youth committee members. It wasn't something that was put together by staff or whatever. They did a good job on it, and they have a very busy December coming up as well. So thank you, Hannah, for coming this evening. Appreciate it.
Great. Thank you so much. All right. Next, we also have an exciting one, because I see a lot of members from our Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors here. But we also have Peter Choi, the Chamber President, CEO. Welcome, Peter, who will be providing us with a quarterly update of chamber activities and upcoming events.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Mann, city council, city staff, Temple Cityans, Chamber Rites. I'm Peter Choi, President of the Temple City Chamber of Commerce, here with our quarterly report. This month, I'm going to switch it up a little, and rather than subject you to hearing me yammer on, I will simply say that we have, of course, fulfilled our terms of the professional service agreement with the city, which is detailed in the quarter of the report submitted. But tonight, we're going to switch it up a little, because we have a couple of quick announcements, and then let me get to the announcements first. First, the deadline-driven announcement is that our member, the Historical Society of Temple City, on Saturday, November nineteenth, will be hosting their first fundraiser since closing for the COVID pandemic. Although the deadline for RSVPs was yesterday, it has been extended. So everyone here and everyone listening in has twelve hours to get your ticket and have a lot of fun at this dinner fundraiser, support the Historical Society. Check out the Temple City Museum inside the thing, which is a great resource for the city. We want to congratulate the incoming board for two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-five, President Wadbert Westgate, who is here, Vice President Donna Georgina, and Treasurer Don Tarrin. If you would like to avail yourselves over the next twelve hours to RSVP and get tickets, Secondly, another member of ours, the Women's Club of Temple City. On Sunday, December fourth, they will be celebrating, after a two-year pandemic hiatus, their annual community Christmas party, and you are all invited to attend. RSVPs must be received no later than November twenty-seventh, so you want to get on it. The highlight this year will be the Women's Club presentation of their two thousand and twenty-two humanitarian award recipients. So we join the Women's Club in hoping that you will participate and celebrate and help recognize these humanitarian award recipients. If you have any questions, just call six-two-six-three-five-four-seven-two-eight-one, or email women'scluboftemplecity@gmail.com. If any of you are here, you can just take a picture. We put a flyer up by our coffee in the foyer, and you can also look for the flyers in our next e-newsletter going out this week. Final announcement is that the Temple City Chamber is hosting an electronic waste recycling event on November twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, that's Saturday and Sunday, from nine AM to three PM, at five-five-nine-five Rosemead, which is the parking lot of the Super A Foods supermarket. So Saturday, Sunday, November twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, bring your computers, your microwave, your old laptops, your broken electronics, recycle them in a way that's healthy for the planet, and that is an event happening again on the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. We're switching things up with our chamber report tonight. Rather than have me go through what we've done last month, et cetera, you know, the city of Temple City is not just the buildings and parks and streets, it is the people who live and work in it. And at the end of the day, the Chamber of Commerce is also, like soil and green, people. And so tonight, we wanted to share with the city council the faces of the chamber, because the chamber is not this face. As much as I'm about town and as much as I'm here, I thought tonight we would switch it up. We installed our Board of Directors for two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you, Councilmember Mann, for installing them. And so we have a few here, and I'd like to recognize them. As I call out each board member, if they would just simply stand and acknowledge. And then after that, I would like to introduce five of our chamber board members, who represent just a tiny smidgen of the diversity of our membership, and that's really the blood and guts and soul of the chamber. But before I do, I want to recognize one other human being, which was our longtime office manager, executive assistant, Fawn Mack, who has sadly left for greener pastures. As I said to her, "I'm happy for you, I'm sad for me," but we wish her well. We left on great terms, and we look forward to bumping into her around town, but she served the chamber well. We want to say thank you, thank you, thank you very much to Fawn Mack-Grenstedt. First, with our board. You know, a fish stinks from the head, as they say. Whatever's at the top influences how the organization works. We have been very fortunate and blessed to have really great board chairs. And this year, our chair is once again selected by unanimous consent by the board to repeat as the board chair. She has led us through this pandemic, which has been tough for everyone, and she has led with intelligence and kindness, which is a fancy way of saying she is smart and nice, and that is the reaction of everyone on our board. She is familiar to many here, because she's a top engineer with TransTech Engineers. And she's also, you know, someone who really not just volunteers her time to the board and to the community, but also to young women for STEM classes, raising future engineers, especially girl engineers, as it were. And it's just exciting to have that kind of energy. She, again, has led with intelligence and kindness. She is a fantastic person. I wish the Mayor Sternquist was here, because I wanted to say, as the mayor knows and as I say all the time, "I love me my strong, smart women." And we are very, very delighted that we are being led by a strong, smart woman with TransTech Engineers, our board chair, Melissa DiMerchi. Woo-hoo! Thank you, Melissa. Our Vice Chair, Robert Powers, could not be here, because this board, as we all know, but I should emphasize, are all working professionals. And so the fact that they donate their most valuable commodity, their time, because, you know, as I say, "You can take the love of my life, and I'll be heartbroken, but I will fall in love again. And you can take my money, and I'll be upset, but I will work hard and make more money. But if you take my time, it's gone." So when people donate their time, it's a really big thing, and I, seemingly personally as the executive director of the chamber, take that very seriously. Robert Powers is on a business trip. He is the founder and owner of College Torch, which is a college counseling service that helps high school students maximize their potential to get into the best university they can. And of course, in a city like Temple City with high academic standards, that's a very important thing. We love having that element on the board. He is the definition of quiet waters run deep. When he speaks, he's always with intelligence and precision. We're delighted, and we salute Robert Powers, who is not here tonight. Also not here tonight, I believe, is our secretary, a longtime board member, a real estate Realtor with Dilbeck Realtors. She's familiar to many, and she has been with the chamber. She's serving as our secretary, an often thankless job, where you have to take the minutes, and she does it with excellence. As they say, you can rely on Rita, and that's Rita Padilla, our secretary. Thank you, Rita. Our treasurer. I've said it many times before, it is no small thing to have a professional bookkeeper as your finance, terror, and treasurer, keeping the books for this nonprofit. We want to also thank her boss over at Quality Bookkeeping, Kathy Chambers, for allowing her to devote such time to us, and that is our treasurer. We thank her so much, Margaret Healy. I would be remiss if I did not also mention that Margaret Healy is also the proud mother of a former Miss Temple City. So that is exciting. Going down, our past board chair. Our executive committee is these individuals and our past board chair, who served this chamber, led with distinction. He's an architect, he's a construction expert. You know, frankly, whether you're adding a bathroom, or whether you're building a second home out in, you know, Desert Hot Springs, you know, he's your man. He's the founder and owner of Erinay Design Build, writes a popular column for the paper on home improvement. We were delighted to have him as our guest speaker at a most recent Zoom, which was Home Improvement One-O-One. Bring any question you want and get them answered, and we look forward to doing that again. When there are new building statutes, we may have him back next year, but he remains on the executive committee. He's the past board chair, and really, just a very nice, smart guy. Sircon Erinay, sircon. Thanks, sircon. Another past board chair is someone, you know, you hear the term, "This person needs no introduction," and in Temple City, I think this is one hundred and ten percent true. There are certain people, you can say their name, like Judy Chu, and people know who that is. And when you say this name, everybody goes, "Yes, I know that name," and they always say it with affection. You may have seen him directing traffic as a deputy sheriff on Las Tunas during the Camellia Parade. Or you may look right over there and see him as a deputy sheriff, keeping order in this court and making sure I don't use any profanities. Through him, we're delighted that we were able to sponsor the Temple City Little League, and we thank him for bringing that to us. And look, I said, "Needs no introduction," longtime board member, past board chair, Ed Chen. Unable to be with us tonight is Brian Baretto of California American Water. He's super busy, and we're amazed that he's able to participate and bring his intelligence and his vast experience on many chambers and many boards here to us, and I wish he was here, but we thank him. One of our newest board members is the owner of Metro City Builders. They're a construction firm, architecture design firm, and he is here tonight. He's a smart, focused, pleasant, and intuitive person. It's Tony Zhang. Tony. Our final board member, and this is, if you look up the dictionary, last but not least, this is that moment, last but not least. Taking up the resident chair, the residential chair on our Board of Directors, is someone who is very familiar, I believe, to everyone here, because he is often sitting right up there as a member of our planning commission. And so he brings that experience, he brings his daywork experience, and he brings his experience as a resident of this city to our board, and we love that input. Jeffrey Lee. Jeffrey. Thank you, Jeffrey. And of course, we thank Mayor Proten William Mann, who serves as a city council liaison. Councilmember Mann and I are board members, but we're non-voting members, so we listen, we input, and the board decides. So we get to our special guests. These are some of the faces of the chamber, but we have five chamber members that I think really demonstrate the diversity, not just of their cultural heritage, as it were, which is how the word is often used, but their businesses and the kind of membership we have. The first is, let me say, on Las Tunas, we were sad to see my good friend Jing Li and Wushu Action Star Academy leave during the pandemic, but we were delighted to welcome our newest member, not our newest member, but our new member, our latest member, Pop Rock Academy, an entertainment school for children. I will just say very quickly, as you may all know, that one of the big hits on Netflix was Squid Game, and many of you will remember the red light, green light giant doll that was a harrowing sequence in that show. Well, the voice of that doll was one of ours, young Regan Toh, a student at Pop Rock Academy, and also the daughter of Dr. Toh, who runs Park Lane Dentistry. You know, America's only first Hello Kitty dental clinic right here on Las Tunas, young Regan Toh. He is himself an actor, a writer, and a creative artist. And what I know about Paul and his team, you have seen his students at community events, he has immediately jumped in and become part of the fabric of the city. But what I know about Paul Quo is that he brings his passion for the arts and imparts it to his students. And I encourage you to see their YouTube video, which is a fantastic piece of one-shot filming that really shows you what the Pop Rock Academy is. It's a great thing for children. The arts is an important element of education, and so I'd like to invite Paul up here. Paul, come on up to say a few words. Paul Quo, owner and founder of Pop Rock Academy.
Hello. I'm Paul. Thank you so much for having me here, and it's been a wonderful pleasure. We moved in last year around this time in October, so it's a little over a year, and it's been a fantastic one year here, first year. And thank you so much to Peter for all of his support, because he really connected us with the community here. So during this last year, now our students have found a lot of success, and we've been building our programs, and part of it has been, you know, through Peter, we've been in contact with various events, like last month, was it last month? No, earlier this month, at the Relay for Life events, our students were able to perform along with earlier this year in the Camellia Festival and all the other events in Temple City. So we're so excited to have our students be given so many wonderful opportunities here, and, you know, and being a part of the chamber is definitely a huge part of it. And on top of that, our students are doing really well in Hollywood, too. Some of the more recent bookings, we have students who booked a couple of upcoming Pixar projects that I can't even talk about, because of all the NDAs that they sign. And then we have another one that just appeared on The Bold and the Beautiful. And we also have students who have done, even adults, in their senior years, who've just recently done a Google commercial and a Moon Boots campaign, and Elder Statesmen and other Citibank commercials, and all sorts of wonderful things. So it's been wonderful here for this last year, here in Temple City, and we look forward to many more years here. We've even started a new adult program, Acting for Non-Actors and Acting for Realtors, where we teach and impart. We did an Acting for Realtors program for a group of KW agents and associates, and we had a wonderful time using acting to help educate everyone, even adults, to improve their communication skills, networking skills, and other improvisatory skills. So we think, you know, acting and performing arts is such an integral part for both young kids and adults alike, and we look forward to continuing developing more programs and working with the chambers. You know, Peter has helped us promote all of our programs and helped us grow our businesses, you know, during this past year, and we're so thankful for all the wonderful resources here. So thank you.
Thank you, Paul Quo of Pop Rock Academy on Las Tunas, and thank you for reminding me that it is not just children, but adults of all ages. Every age I see in this room can benefit from taking some creative classes. Next up is from El Ruiz Senor Grill Restaurant, who were selected as one of our, as our restaurant of the year a few years back. Many of us know Norma, many of us know the food. When you're, can't eat another Mapu tofu, then it's nice to have El Ruiz Senor Grill to go to. I will say that their catering is on point. I had an event where forty family members at my house. El Ruiz Senor did the taco bar. My family hasn't stopped talking about it, and we had the best time. So I really recommend, as the holiday season is coming, if you have a catering event, whether it's outdoors or indoors, El Ruiz Senor is a great option, and we totally recommend them. And here, to say a few words, is Norma's daughter, who is managing the Temple City location, Debbie Ruiz. Debbie? From El Ruiz Senor Grill Restaurant, which is, of course, right on Temple City Boulevard, just south of Las Tunas. Debbie?
Thank you, Peter. Hello, everybody. Thank you for having me today. Like you said, I'm Debbie from El Ruiz Senor Grill. I'm, it's my first month, starting as a, well, managing now the restaurant, so it's been a bit of a journey from going to helping mom and dad to now everything's on me. But from what my mom has told me in the past is that the chamber has really helped us in networking and getting to know the community, and pretty much putting our name out there to reminding everyone, "Hey, we have a Mexican restaurant here in Temple City, and it's the only one, I believe." Right? And yeah, I invite everyone to come and try us out whenever you get a chance. We can deliver. If you'd like to dine in and have some margaritas or micheladas on a hot day or a cold day, because we have hot chocolate, cafe de olla, and a whole bunch of delicious Mexican food and Oaxacan food. So.
Do you still have the super burrito?
It's called the Big Daddy Burrito.
So remember Jerry, was it? When they had the contest and?
Yeah, we had, we had a contest a few years ago.
Five-pound burrito right here.
Yep.
I'm proud to say. I think I still have my T-shirt somewhere.
I need to find more of the T-shirts and see when we can hold a contest for the whole board.
Let me know if you do.
Yeah, whenever you'd like, you know where to find me. And yeah, with the holidays coming up, or pretty much any time, anyone can get catering. You can always give me a call at the restaurant, or, you know, visit me, and I'll be there to answer any questions, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Debbie Ruiz of El Ruiz Senor Grill Restaurant on Temple City Boulevard. And if anybody wants to reach any of these members, you can always just call the chamber office, where the easiest one to find is Google, Google Temple City Chamber of Commerce. Our third of the five members, very quickly, that we'd like to get to, is from Temple City Community Adult Education. And actually, this is interesting, because I had met with Ken before the pandemic, and then the pandemic hit, then now we're coming out of it, and so delighted to have him now finally join. Temple City Community Adult Education, very simply, there are many seniors in Temple City for whom English may not be their first language, and so there are many resources that Ken will talk about that will help these seniors. But it's not just language issues, it's job training, finding employment as a senior, but it's also mental health issues, loneliness and depression, especially with the holidays coming. It's all of these things that affect seniors, especially those for whom English may not be your first language. And so there are many resources there. We're delighted to bring our resources together with the Temple City Community Adult Education. And let me let the expert talk about it. Ken? Ken Wu of the nonprofit Temple City Community Adult Education, affiliated, you know, with TCUSD. Ken, come on up.
Hey, how are you? Hey. Hey, guys. I'm, I speak quick, you know. Temple City Community Adult School, been here for pre-pandemic, pre-pandemic to now. And I guess our whole idea is basically educate those who needs to have a better, to get a better life. Majority of our people that comes in are all Temple City people and a lot of immigrants. So English as a secondary language is our primary focus. And now I think our whole focus is shifting more toward a holistic approach. So we understand that since pandemic, that, you know, there's a lot of mental health issues, and people need to find a place to connect, and we're trying to provide that part of it for, for the city, for our community and our tri-cities around here. And as such, not only just mental, we also deal with a little bit of food insecurity the best we can. You know what I mean? We do get a lot of lost support, so we try to take care of those who have a lot of low incomes, might have a lot of food insecurity and problems with that. So we try to provide those who really are marginalized in that sense, and still, you know, kind of bring people together, where I think when adult school started, it was kind of like that. So trying to bring that back a little bit more focused. That's it.
Thank you. Ken Wu with the Temple City Community Adult Education. What I would say is, if you know a senior, could be your neighbor, could be in your family, could be in someone else's family, and you think they need some assistance of some sort, and you wonder whether the Temple City Community Adult Education handles that issue, contact us. Nothing worth, nothing, why should you not try? So just contact us, and we'll put you in touch with Ken. Our fourth member is really someone that needs a Our fourth member is really someone that needs an introduction here. I will embarrass her by saying what I always say about her is that she has the greatest smile in Temple City. It was difficult to conceive that someone could do a better job than Nan Fish as the executive director of the Camellia Festival. But she certainly has stepped up, and she is the executive director of the Camellia Festival. I was delighted to attend the kickoff luncheon last weekend as we start rolling into Camellia season. And we look forward to engaging with her. She's so great, so fun, so smart to work with. The Chamber is delighted to engage with her. And here just to say a few words, the executive director of Temple City Camellia Festival, which by the way, item 70 on the agenda tonight, the Chamber supports 100%. But without further ado, Dawn Terran.
Thank you, Peter. The Chamber is always super supportive of the Camellia Festival, which this year is back in February, February 24th, 25th, and 26th, by the grace of the council, hopefully today. And look for lots more information. The theme this year is Imagine If. So get your imaginations flowing. We're looking for lots of floats. We're looking for lots of kids. We're looking for lots of community support. And we're really looking forward to a very traditional festival season. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dawn Terran, executive director of the Temple City Camellia Festival. And now finally, our fifth member, who is our newest member, literally just joined because he is the vice president and branch manager of Temple City's newest bank, located at 9502 Las Tunas Drive, CTBC Bank. And we're delighted to have him here. Andy, if you'd like to come on up. Andy Lee again is the vice president and branch manager of CTBC Bank. They've just opened, but I'll let him tell you about the bank and its presence here, its new presence. And welcome to our newest member, Andy.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Andy, Andy Lee from CTBC Bank. We recently opened two weeks ago. And on behalf of the CTBC Bank, it's an honor to be a, the member of the Temple City Chamber of Commerce. I lived in Temple City for 20 years, and finally I also can work in the Temple City. And our bank is recently open and did offer the traditional product, CD, checking CD, and also the finance, the loan for the mortgage and commercial loan. And we don't, we just don't want to just offer the traditional product, but we also want to reimburse to our community to support the resident and also business in this Temple City. Thank you very much.
And that's Andy Lee, the vice president and branch manager of Temple City's newest bank, CTBC Bank. Mayor Protem Man, I hope that concluding this report that we might take a group photo of everyone in front. And as everybody comes on up, please, for the photo, let me just thank the city. Thank the city council. Thank our city manager. You're great partners to have, and we enjoy working with everyone in this room. Thank you. So let's get a picture, everyone. Right, keep that close, folks. One for the Chamber, everybody look here. One, two, three. One more, one, two, three. Thank you so much, all right? Thank you, Mayor.
All right, well, I do want to personally thank the whole board and Peter for, for being here tonight. I can say in my role as the liaison with the Chamber that I'm proud to serve with the board members. And I think the Chamber is about to take an exciting turn in direction. So I'm sure we'll have much more to report back in the coming months. So thank you for being here tonight. I really appreciate it. All right, next, we'll be moving on to public comments on items not listed on the agenda. Do we have any public comments at this time? All right, seeing none, we will close public comments and we move on to consent calendar. All consent calendars can be approved in a single motion unless there's any items we want to pull.
I move we approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. If there's no objections, can we get a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Councilmember Yu, can you hear us? Councilmember Yu, is your phone on mute?
Thumbs up.
All right, thumbs up, that's, that's, that's a yes.
Mayor Protem Man?
Yes. All right, so the consent calendar has been approved. And we move on to our public hearing, which is the second reading and adoption of ordinance 22-1066 of the City Council of the Temple City, amending Title VII by adopting by reference to 2023 L.A. County Building Code, Electrical Code, Plumbing Code, Mechanical Code, Residential Code, existing building code, California Green Building Standards Code with certain amendments, additions, and deletions by adding a new Chapter 10, electric vehicle charging stations permitting to Title VII. And we have a presentation from our community development director, Scott Reimers.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. This is actually your second public hearing on this item, so I'll keep my comments short. Your first public hearing on this was back on November 1st. Since then, this item has been published twice in the newspaper per state law. And so now we're having your second public hearing. Basically, what the state requires us to update the building codes to, to tie in with the California building codes every three years. What we're proposing here is that we adopt the L.A. County Building Codes by reference. There's a benefit to both thus as the city and to community members by doing that. It helps align our local codes with state and county codes. It provides consistency for our customers. These codes are common and well-known because they're used by almost every city in the, in the county of L.A. They're readily available and accessible. The county codes are now almost universal and act as a standard. And a challenge to them is unlikely because it would be challenging basically the whole county and all of the member agencies. So with that, staff is available if you or the public has any questions.
Okay, thank you, Director Reimers. Do we have any council questions? Is Councilmember Yu able to communicate with us verbally?
He has to unmute his microphone.
I think we need to give him a chalkboard.
We can hear his, we can see his mouth move, but we can't hear the audio. Okay, well, maybe while we're troubleshooting that, we'll, we'll come back to you, Councilmember Yu, if you have any questions or comments later. So for now, we'll, we'll open the public hearing. If there's anyone from the public that likes to comment on this item, now's the time. All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. If there are any final council questions or comments? Councilmember Chavez?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Viscara? Councilmember Yu? Okay. All right, then if, could we have a motion?
Mayor Protem Man, I would make a motion that we read by title only. Wait for the reading and adopt ordinance 22-1066, updating Title VII of the Temple City Municipal Code, updating the city's building regulations.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second? Thank you. We have a motion and a second. If there is no objections, may we have a roll call, please, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu? Councilmember Yu? That's a thumbs up?
That's a thumbs up, that's yes.
Mayor Protem Man?
Yes. All right, so that passes.
Mayor Protem, may I just take a quick moment just to, if we can try to troubleshoot, Councilmember Yu's audio?
Okay, well, we'll take a quick break.
Sorry, sorry, the clerk needs to read by title the ordinance.
Okay, yes.
My apologies.
Madam City Clerk, if you could read the title for us, please.
Thank you. Ordinance number 22-1066, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Temple City, California, amending Title VII by adopting by reference to 2023 Los Angeles County Building Code Title 26, Electrical Code Title 27, Plumbing Code Title 28, Mechanical Code Title 29, Residential Code Title 30, Existing Building Code Title 33, California Green Building Standards Code with certain amendments, additions, and deletions add by adding a new Chapter 10, electric vehicle charging stations permitting to Title VII.
Okay, thank you. And I think we'll be troubleshooting the connection real quick?
Yeah, if we could just take a two-minute break, Madam Tampa.
Sure, all right.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, we can.
Yes.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, great. Good to hear you, Councilmember Yu. All right, then we'll, we'll get right back into it. That was like a two-second break. All right, we'll move on to the next public hearing, item 8B, establishment of an expedited nondiscretionary multifamily review process in a library of, I think that's supposed to say prototype, prototype architectural designs for multifamily projects. Mr. City Manager, Mr. Cook, you want to start us off?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This item is asked to be continued to the first meeting in December. But this was published as a public hearing, so we ask that you at least take, open the public hearing to take public comment and, and a motion to continue to the first meeting in December if you, if, if the council would, please.
Okay, sounds good. Then let's first, we'll, I guess first we'll open up the public hearing for this item. Is there anyone who would like to make a comment? Kind of difficult to, without a report, so. So we will close the public hearing and move on to any council questions or comments or motion?
No?
So I, I think the desired motion is to move this item to the first meeting of December?
If you'd be so kind, please.
Mayor Protem, I would make a motion that we continue the public hearing to the next city council meeting on December 6th, 2022.
So we have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Man?
Yes, so, thank you. We will continue this item at the next regular city council meeting. Next, unfinished business, we have none. New business, we have none. Next is an update from our city manager, Mr. Brian Cook.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Man and members of the council. I'll be brief. This, since we don't have a meeting until December 6th, just a reminder that lights on Temple City will be coming up before our next council meeting, which will be Friday, December 2nd. We look forward to the community being out again. We've had a lot of good success. Thank you to the staff. So far, it's been a busy couple of months with events going on. So with that, I'm just, Mr. Matsumoto, our Parks Recreation Director, is just going to take just a few moments to give you an update on the EV charging station. If you, just as a reminder, we did implement a new fee schedule. And Mr. Matsumoto is going to report on the latest data that we have. Mr. Matsumoto?
Thank you, City Manager Cook. And good evening, Mayor Protem Man and members of the city council. We just wanted to give a brief update regarding the EV charge stations since we've implemented the new fee structure, cost recovery fees. So again, just background, we have four total chargers at Primrose Park. This does show the expanded hours that were requested by the council, so seven days a week, 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. each day. We still have the four-hour charge limit that's implemented. The fees went into effect on October 1st. And in addition to the fees which is listed below, we do have that $2 grace period penalty. So that's if you leave your car beyond the charge time for 30 minutes, you pay a penalty of $2. We haven't seen that actually come into play at all. Everybody's been moving their vehicles within that 30-minute grace period. Second slide, please. So we wanted to provide a comparison between the months of September and October. September was the last full month where we did not have fees attached to the use of the charge stations. And October represents the first month where we did have fees implemented. As you can see, which we anticipated, there was a decrease in overall use of the charge stations, which we anticipated, you know, going from free, no charge, to, to be in charge. However, some of the data is interesting to point out. So the total number of unique drivers, those aren't just people that come and utilize the charge stations. Even with the decreased amount of use in October, there were still a similar amount of unique drivers. So what that tells us most likely is we're seeing a lot of turnover use, you know, even with that decreased amount of kilowatts that were expended per month. You see the wait, wait times significantly decrease. So it was almost five and a half hours of wait time initially without any fees in September. And that's gone down to about 37 minutes. And really, those are just peak use times. A lot of the times, not all the charge stations are active in use. So you can just go and actually charge your vehicles without any wait. But if there is a wait, usually it's at most about 30, or on average, 37 minutes. The total number of sessions, that's each individual charge session. So again, we do see a decrease in October, but not a significant decrease in that number of sessions per month. Average length per session is roughly the same. And then the last two lines are the costs. So we've collected, which again is a cost recovery fee, $958 for the month of October. And just to get an idea, so roughly for those two-hour sessions, the average cost for that entire two-hour session is $1.85. So even though we're doing the, you know, cost recovery fees, it's still a nominal amount, you know, per session. So I can answer any questions the council may have. We just wanted to, to make aware the council, the, the usage since the fee's been implemented.
Thank you. Any council questions?
Adam, do we have the information on the charging stations regarding the restrictions and all that kind of stuff? Is there, is it on the charging or is there a poll there with that?
So we have a, we have a message that it's limited in the amount of characters you're able to put on there, but we have it directed to the city website where it lists the different fee structures and then the costs.
So you have to go to the website to see that? They can't just drive up to the station and see that stuff on a site?
So on the, where, where it shows up in details on the app, on the app, the ChargePoint app, where, what you need in order to utilize it?
So they would see it then?
And you would see it upfront that the cost for the time of use and what the anticipated cost might be during that timeframe. So that's how it's displayed.
Right.
Any questions, Councilmember Viscara? Councilmember Yu, any questions?
I, I guess my question is, so we're going to continue with this setup for, for the foreseeable future?
Correct. That was provided as council direction. So unless the council would want to reevaluate it at a later point in time, it would be probably discussed as part of the master fee schedule since it's now included as part of, a part of that document. So that would, you know, most likely be the time to evaluate.
The second question is, have we received any complaints or comment?
Initially, prior to the- complaints but comments, probably maybe about four to five residents or users of the EV charge stations. Mainly, they were asking if there were ways to subsidize the costs at all, whether it be through installation of solar panels to offset costs. But it was fairly minimal, and I think if we're taking a look at the overall usage, we haven't seen a, there's been a decrease, but it hasn't been a significant drop-off of usage. So at least for now, it seems, you know, we're, we're still getting utilization of the charge stations even with the fees.
You know, I for one hope that this is just a start, and that we're going to have plenty more later on. Sorry.
Councilmember Yu, do you have any other questions?
Uh, no, no, thank you, Mayor.
All right, well, Mr. Matsumoto, thank you for that report. And I guess moving forward, if there's any significant changes, these updates will continue to be provided?
Yes, we will plan on giving you a couple more updates before the, before we present the fee schedule. So just giving an update on, and if we see any anomalies in the meantime, we'll make sure to provide those to you in a weekly report, in our normal weekly reports as well.
Okay. And also just to clarify, even though the slide says revenue, we're actually simply offsetting the actual cost of electricity?
Exactly.
So we're not really, we're not making money?
No, that's, it's not a money-making venture for us. This is just directly the SE costs that we are recovering.
Okay.
Well, in fact, we're not even recovering the costs entirely.
If you count the installation and the cost of installation of the units and the cost of the units as well, that was part of the grant that paid for Primrose Park that we're in the process of getting reimbursed for.
Okay, great. All right, well, thank you, Mr. Matsumoto.
Thank you.
That's it for me, Mayor Protem. Thank you, sir.
All right, next, update from our city attorney, Mr. Murphy.
Very briefly, the League of California Cities sent to the city attorneys today its hundred-plus-page briefing on new legislation, so I obviously haven't had a chance to read all of it today, so I'll bore you with it next time. Thank you.
Okay, then we shall be ready for that boredom. Thank you. All right, next, we have our council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Do we have any? No. Okay. If there's none, we move on to 14 items separate from the regular agenda, starting with Councilmember Chavez.
You know, I don't really have much tonight, just other than to say thank you for staff and all the volunteers. We have had quite a few events the last couple of weeks in the city, and Relay for Life, Sheriff Walk Run, we had, of course, our Veterans Day Celebration, all went off, I thought, without a hitch and well, and well attended, so got lucky with the weather. So thank you all to those who were involved. Parks and Recreation staff, Adam, please express our thanks to all your staff. I know a lot of them are out there over the weekends and working hard, so thank you very much.
Councilmember Viscara?
I would echo Councilman Chavez's comments, and I thought the Veterans Day Celebration was handled very well. Thank you very much.
Oh, and Athens, of course, for the hot dogs. It was good as ever.
Great. Councilmember Yu?
Yeah, I would echo the same sentiment, and for those of you who don't see me at some recent event is because I have quite a few medical appointments, and I'm now holding myself out to wait for my medical procedure. So that's why I haven't been able to attend in person in some of the, some city events. But I wish I could be with you all, and wishing everybody a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Councilmember Yu. And certainly, all of our, we hope you make a quick speedy recovery, and hope to see you in person soon. All right, as for me, I also echo my fellow councilmember sentiments. Our staff has done a phenomenal job with a lot of our recent events, even from the Halloween Carnival to the Veterans Day Celebration. I heard a lot of comments personally about how wonderful it was to have the Veterans Day Celebration back in person, and there was a lot of excitement about people just being able to gather together and recognize the importance of the service from our, from our, from our men and women who serve in the military. So I was very touched, and also, we were glad to have some of our fellow dignitaries also attend, and we had a, we had a very nice speaker, our very own former Parks and Rec staff, Mr. Koski, so that was, that was very nice. And also shout out to Relay for a successful Relay for Life. That's also, that's always a very touching and emotional celebration. I don't even know if I should call it a celebration, but it's, I guess it is a celebration. It's a celebration of, of life, of the fight, to remember those who are battling cancer, those who have survived cancer, and those who we have lost to cancer. And to me, the, all the volunteers that make up Relay for Life have done a tremendous job. I mean, the amount of money that we've raised over the years is a staggering amount, and to think that, you know, all that's going to fund cancer research, and hopefully, one of these days, we can say that we don't need that anymore. Hopefully, we advance to the point where we don't have to be, be talking about cancer in a bad way. It's no longer part of our vocabulary someday, so. But looking forward to Lights on TC. I know it's awesome to see so many of our residents and, and community members out at our events, and we, we keep saying, getting back to the new normal. I don't know if I really want to say that anymore. It's, you know, it is what it is. We, we're all adjusting, we're all trying to make the best of it. We, you know, life, life goes on. You know, as a city, we have continued to move forward and focus on taking care of our businesses and making sure our residents get the services they need. And of course, moving into the holiday season, especially Thanksgiving, want everyone to be, stay vigilant, stay safe, and, and, yeah, we'll see you around town. Then next, we'll move on to additional public comments. Do we have any? Oh, yes. Ms. Shun Zhang, welcome.
Good evening, Protem Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Shun Zhang, Board of Director with the Western Bureau Board of Realtors. On behalf of the Association, we would like to thank the city manager, Brian Cook, attending our MLS breakfast meeting two weeks ago, and gave all the Realtors a presentation on Temple City Development Update. We appreciate your time and the information of ADU's guidelines and updates on some of the project's status. Thank you again, Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Ms. Zhang. Yeah, we couldn't make it. We were trying to make Mr. Cook's life a little bit difficult, ask him some questions that we knew he couldn't answer.
It's like the school teacher not being present to give you the grade, but that's okay.
It's okay, I'm sure there'll be a next time. Invite him again for, do like an annual thing so we get a chance.
We do that every year.
Good, good.
Mr. Reimers normally came over the past year, but he's here himself, doesn't matter.
Okay, all right, we won't pick on Mr. Reimers, but we'll pick on Mr. Cook. All right, do we have any other public comment? All right, seeing none, then we'll close public comment, and we are adjourned for tonight. Good night, everyone.